At the beginning of each podcast episode, hosts will typically read an ad for another company. But we're gonna take this opportunity to promote and plug what we're building. We are building an AI-powered app that's gonna be your personal mindset coach. Think about it as if you had a therapist in your pocket. One that will help you get to know who you really are. Process your emotions and make sense of your thoughts. The app Launch Waitlist is back live. And it's on our website. For convenience, we also left the link in the show notes. It's very simple. All you gotta do is put your name and email address and you're signed up for the waitlist. So you'll be the first to know when we launch. And also, you'll be the first to be able to actually test it. For now, here's a clip from this week's episode.
I always say to people, never leave yourself at the door to make anyone else feel comfortable.
That's the big thing. We do so much to make other people feel comfortable, but make ourselves feel uncomfortable.
That's right. So we leave ourselves at the door, literally. And then I say, never water yourself down so you could be digestible. Because if they don't like you, let them choke. Period.
So. Alright, so the word authenticity, right? You probably hear it all the time. It's a buzzword. When you hear the word, what does it mean to you?
You know what? To be honest with you, when I first heard the word, I didn't know what people were saying, but that's what I was being called.
People were calling you authentic?
Oh, you're so authentic. And I was like, okay. And when I think about authentic, I think about like, you know, coming from the Caribbean, like, you know, like the authenticity of the culture or whatever, like something that is relevant to a location, not to a way of being. Right? It's more about like authentic culture, like authentic. But to be like that, I didn't really get it.
Wait, so when's the first time you heard it?
You know, I think when I started organizing. But when I really got that word ingrained in me was when I ran for office.
Interesting.
Because a lot of people were like, you're so authentic. You're like you. I'm like, yeah. Who else would I be? Like, it was weird.
It was almost like a shock to see you in that position.
It was a shock that people had to name me that. Like, as a politician or an elected or a candidate, that stood out, the fact that I was just so who I am.
Right. You're like, shouldn't everybody do that?
That's what I'm saying. That's why I was like, y'all like, what? What? Like, I didn't really understand the concept. I didn't really understand why it was such a big deal that I was the way that I was and that I've always been that way, right?
Wait, so take it back, because you said Caribbean. Where in the Caribbean are you from?
So I'm Afro-Latina.
Okay.
Okay. Just in case people don't know, Dominicans are black. Because a lot of folks, you know, when we were abducted from, you know, when our ancestors were abducted, the only difference is the port that we got dropped off at, right? So I understand and claim my black roots. So I'm Dominican. And I came here when I was five years old. So I grew up here.
And when you say here, you came to Boston immediately?
Yeah, I came to Boston. Well, I made a pit start in New York.
Okay, okay.
But then I came to move to Boston is where I grew up. And then I moved back to New York for like 10 years.
I feel like growing up our authentic self or who we end up being, our family has such an impact on it because they have certain expectations on who we should be. So like growing up, when you got to Boston or even to the US, like what do you think some of the expectations were for you from family?
Well, I was five when I got here. So they didn't expect me to do nothing but, you know, just be a kid. Or at least that's what I thought. But they did expect me to learn English. I had to learn English quickly because my mom did not speak English. And my mom was undocumented for a period of time. So I had to become the official translator and defender for her.
What do you mean defender?
Like, I had to advocate for my mom. I remember being, one time I was at the welfare office. And I had to, I was translating for her. And I remember the case manager was kind of like rude and mean. And I felt bad. And I was only nine years old. And I didn't want my mom to feel the way that I did. And it was such a pivotal moment in my life because I still remember it. And that was the first time I had to, I had to speak up. And I did. I said, my mom said you're not being nice. But my mom didn't say those things. I said it on her behalf. Because I didn't tell my mom half the things that the lady was saying. I already told my mom what she needed to know so we can get what we needed. And then when it was my turn to translate for my mom, I added a few little extra things. But.
But that's, that's a young age to be.
Well, I had to. I started working when I was 12.
Did that feel, did that feel natural to you?
Yeah, because I remember diciendo la Biblia when I was little. They used to call me the Bible.
Why?
I don't know. That was weird. Because yo sabía mucho for my age. I knew a lot for my age, I guess.
La Biblia.
La Biblia. They're like, the la Biblia. I don't even know why. I think it was because I knew, I was, I was smart beyond my years, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
And so it felt natural for me because, you know, I started working when I was 12. I had to. My mom didn't have papers, you know? I had to help, you know?
Doing what? What did you start doing at 12?
I know, right? So I wanted, so the real truth is, is that I wanted a pair of Nikes.
Okay.
When they first, everybody had them except me. I had like the Bobos and like, you know, the no names.
Do you remember which Nikes or just?
I wanted the white. No, 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 not any.
Okay.
It was back then, it was the white ones with the red swish, like the classics.
Oh, like the, like the Air Force ones, but with the red swoosh?
They weren't, they weren't Air Force. Well, they were just regular Nikes.
Okay, okay.
This was in the eighties. I don't know what, what, I just remember them white with the red little swoosh and the little blue line in the bottom. They were not Air Forces. They were just regular Nikes.
Okay, okay.
At least that's how I remember them. But anyways, everybody had them except me.
And we just compare ourselves naturally.
Right. And there was an insurance agency that had just moved around my neighborhood. And I said, I went up to them. I said, I know everybody around here. Do a flyer, you know, so I can tell everybody about your business.
You said that at 12?
I did. Well, I needed some Nikes and my mom would not pay for them. And my stepdad was like, well, why don't you go get a job? I'm like, well, how was gonna hire me?
Yeah.
So I said, mira, ve te busca trabajo para allá. Yo acaba de abrir, mira, ve. I was like, I went over there. I was like, hey. And they gave me, I don't know how much it was for each flyer, but all I know is I made $26, which was not enough for the Nikes. That ended that career.
Yeah.
Because I went back to get some more. They were like, no, that's it. Like, you know, you, that's all we got for you. And then I went to translate for someone on my block at another insurance company. And I went there como they in San Frans. I think I was like 13 or 14. And then I got, I got a job with them under the table. I don't know if you know what that means.
I know what that means, yeah.
Nobody, you know, I was in.
Straight cash.
That's right. And because I wasn't legal to work.
Right.
I was filing and I was translating at this insurance agency. And I stayed there until I was legal to work. So I've been working my whole life.
Do, that's, that's so interesting that at an early age, although you're trying to learn English, you're also seeing the value of you knowing Spanish.
Yeah.
And like you being able to like, not make a career out of it, but it just being a skill.
Yeah, but you know what? I didn't think about it like that when I was a kid. Because when I came here, everybody used to say, speak English, you know, like, this is America.
So there wasn't much of a pride there?
No, my God, I wanted to be anything but Latina. Hello. Yeah. I was, when I came to this country, I was Julia Melania Mejia Peña. By the, by, by fifth grade, I was Julia Mejia, period. I dropped all those extra names. I didn't want to stand out.
Yeah.
When I was younger, you know, but then when I went to high school, you know, I just started claiming myself and like, you know, but early, early when I came here, I came here during the height of what they call the busting era, which was, they didn't want to integrate the school.
Yeah, yeah.
So there was a big fight here.
That was before what the, the match program? Is that what it's called?
Before all that.
Is that what it's called?
Meco.
That one. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That was, that, that's what prompted Meco. So.
Interesting.
I came here in the seventies, late seventies.
So what happened? And you know what? That's, to empathize, like that's, so many people go through that as far as like wanting to hide, not, maybe not wanting to stand out. And a lot of that comes from like the survival tactics that our family teaches us, right? Because as dangerous as it was for us, it was even more dangerous for them, even more dangerous for the previous generation, right? So did you get some of that? Like, what sort of guidance did you get from family at all?
None, because I was the first person in my family to graduate high school.
Like you were the one figuring it out for, for everybody.
And I was the one that everybody brought. I did that for my family, but then I came up, I became that kid around the way that everybody brought with them to where FIA, to the corps, to the doctors. I was the, I would not go to school so I can go help people.
Really?
Because I was one of the few people that was able to do that. Because a lot of the kids that were, like the Puerto Ricans had been here for a long, longer. Some of, some of the kids didn't know how to speak Spanish. They only spoke English, right?
Right.
So I was, I was special in that way because I was able to speak both.
Right.
But I worked, I didn't, I didn't charge people though. I only charged the companies for my service. But I didn't charge my own people. Like, I wouldn't do that. But I remember, and it got to the point that the mundo le decía, llévate la hija de mía. Ya sabes que es solo por ti, right? So I became the one that everybody brought with them.
That's wild. But you alluded to this moment in high school that was pivotal as far as like you being able to feel more comfortable embracing maybe your Latina, whatever. Like what happened in high school?
Well, you know, a lot of things happened in high school. So I always skewed black.
Okay.
Right? Like, I grew up with black people and a few Puerto Ricans. But most of my vibe has always been a little bit more hood, you know, a little bit, you know? But one of my, because I had dropped out of high school and then I went back, right? So the high school that I ended up graduating from, there were a lot of Dominicans.
Which one was that?
Dorchester High.
Okay.
When it was still Dorchester High. So there was a lot of newcomers that had just, you know, that didn't speak English. They had just arrived.
Yeah.
But I was friends with them and they, back then they had the bilingual program.
Yeah.
And then I was in the regular general ed because I wasn't with my own people.
Okay.
But we would have lunches together. And they were like, pero mira, soy una dominicana, like, you know, and I'd never really hung out. So then they started bringing me in. Then I started going, you know, hanging out con lo dominicano. And I, a lo party, lo fin de semana, you know, I started bailando bachata, me ron. And then I became Dominican, even though I grew up, you know, I was Dominican. Pero, in high school, I just remember that because I had been friends with more black people than Latinos, than Dominicans, per se, because that's, there were a lot of Dominicans there. I started seeing that I, I had these two cultures.
Got it.
And when I started hanging out with more Dominicans, I started, I started coming into my own. And also understanding, like, I was living between these two worlds, right? So embracing that journey, embracing the fact that, oh, my, las tripas, are you gonna hear that? My tripas on this?
It's okay, it's okay.
It, that coming to this country, trying to be anything but Latina, right? Immersing myself in the American ways of being and then reconnecting con mi gente.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And being affirmed in both spaces was my aha moment, that I had this, I could, I could navigate these two worlds.
Yeah.
You know?
No, it must feel good to, to be embraced, not only by one, but two groups.
Um, and then at one point, they were trying to pick me against each other, like, congeto, hasta yo soy, I'm with everybody.
Yeah.
They were trying to claim me in both of their taxes. I'm like, no.
Digger, you were dependent on both sides.
I'm here for everybody.
Well, do you think, but it was an interesting time because that was like inside a school, inside a high school. But overall, it seems to be like a, a time in history where you may not have been received well everywhere, everywhere though.
No, I, it's always been difficult to be me. Because I'm a light-skinned Latina that has a hood attitude. When I ran for office, you know, my Spanish got better. Because, to be honest with you, I went, I, I went through these ebbs and flows with my identity, right? And then most of my friends were, you know, all English-speaking. Then my mom se fue para la República, and then she came back. So I, I, duré tiempo que I wasn't, I was living in New York. I wasn't really seeing my family much, you know? I was just speaking English, English, English. So some, some, little by little, I started losing my Spanish. Not losing it. I could speak it. I could translate. I could do all of the essentials. But to be interviewed en español or to do something formal, una entrevista, or, or a speech, I couldn't. So when I ran in 2018, 2019, my first election was difficult because everybody, no one thought I was Dominican.
No one thought you was Dominican?
No. Yo soy dominicana.
Even with a last name like Mejia?
Yeah. Well, they just, the way that I spoke, the way I was showing up.
Got you.
Didn't feel Dominican to them. It wasn't authentic.
Right.
Okay, and, and hasta el accento mío no se me salía.
But that's what I'm saying. Everyone has expectations of what you should be, how you should look, how you should speak.
And I'm not any of those things. And so that's what's difficult because then the Dominicans did not want to embrace me.
Right.
Because they were like, y está loca.
Yeah.
You know?
Es dominicana.
Está, está, ya haciendo creo que dominicana ni sabe blanca, sí, okay. But I started, for the last four or five years, I immersed myself back in my culture. Because I took a break from it, like, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I, I was riding hard with Dominicans when I was in high school.
Yeah.
And then I went out to college, then for the most of the bulk of my career, for the last 20, 25 years, I haven't been.
Yeah.
Con mi gente.
Yeah. And I, I, that resonates with me as far as the language. Because the only times that I speak Spanish is with my mom and abuela. But they're like basic conversations. They're like, oh, mom, cómo tú estás? Qué cosinaste? Like, but like, to have an interview in Spanish and like, the, the level of vocabulary that you have to have is completely different. And if you don't practice that, of course you're gonna lose it.
And when I ran, and it wasn't just my language, it was also my demeanor, right? Because, you know, like I said, I show up, I show up very urban. And most people don't think that that's politically correct or that, you know, that's a little bit too much.
What were some of the things that, what were some of the ways that you showed up that people didn't think was?
Black mean.
Yeah, no, but give me an example, give me an example.
That's it. And the things that I would say would just be a high through. Eso lo que, and that's it, right? And one of my good friends, and this is what I, this hurt me. One of my good friends said, people are saying that you are the Cardi B of the campaign trail. That I have to tone it down, that people are not gonna take me serious. That I had to be something else in order to really be accepted in the political space.
Yeah.
And that hurt me because I'm like, just because I show up in ways that may not be acceptable to some people, you know? I established my own nonprofit. I have had an amazing career. I've had a lot of accolades. So just because I'm a little bit rough around the edges and I'm not super polished and I just speak from my heart, I don't mince my words. I have a lot of mannerisms, you know, like I have this whole demeanor that people should not write me off just because I wasn't showing up in a way that was politically acceptable.
Yeah.
And I ran on a platform that we all belong, regardless of how we show up in this world, right? And I wanted to prove a point that people like me can do this. We don't need acceptance. Like, we can show up as we are. And I'm glad that I did because it would have been really hard to win and keep up a facade. So I said, la gente, they're gonna have to accept me as I am. Así fue. Sin embargo, that was the best thing that I could have done because what I've done now is I've, I've given permission to other people to show up in their true selves. And when you think, when you think about authenticity, that's such a loaded word. Doesn't really mean shit to me, to be honest with you. What it is really about showing up in your true self. That to me feels more affirming. And maybe that's what it means. But the word sounds, the way I, when I told you when I first heard it, it didn't make a connection. Like, it, it felt packaged.
Yeah.
You know, but when you said you show up on your, as your true self, that feels more powerful to me.
Yeah. I mean.
I don't know if that makes sense.
No, it does make sense. It's the whole idea of, of what I'm trying to do with this platform. Like, I'm trying to show people that you don't have to fake it to be successful. And I think so often, we try to fake it because we want to be accepted by everybody, right? But in reality, you should just try to be accepted by the people that you want to reach. And those people are gonna appreciate you for who you are.
And it's not even about you being accepted. It's about you accepting who you are. And then everything else will follow.
Yeah.
Because the real acceptance is yourself.
Yeah.
Because that's what that's about.
Agreed.
So that is what we all should be aiming for, is how do we accept our true selves? And allow ourselves to show up as we are, regardless of how other people feel.
Yeah.
That is liberation. And I think that, you know, all of my speeches, I have so many things that I say, but there's two things that I say everywhere that I go, and I don't care how old you are. If you're my, whatever age demo is in this space, is I always say to people, never leave yourself at the door to make anyone else feel comfortable.
That's the big thing. We do so much to make other people feel comfortable, but make ourselves feel uncomfortable.
That's right. So we leave ourselves at the door, literally. And then I say, never water yourself down so you could be digestible. Because if they don't like you, let them choke. Period. Right? And I say that and I live it and I mean it, but it is hard to do. Because I still have imposter syndrome, where I still feel like I don't belong in certain spaces.
When's the last time you felt like that?
I always feel that way.
Always.
Yeah, even till this day, I still feel that way. And I think it's more, it's more about class.
Tell me about that. What do you mean?
It's less about race for me. It's more about class. Because I barely graduated high school, but I ended up graduating high school. I was almost 20 by the time I got out of high school. I've been working all my life, two to three jobs just to make my ends meet, right? I didn't go to any prestigious, big-name schools. I don't have access to a huge network, even though I'm a whole city ass counselor. But there are people who have had access to spaces and places that I've never been in. And then when I walk into those spaces, I always feel like I'm being judged. Because people have a perception of me as, as a, as a public figure. If you ask people, what do you, what do you think about Council Mejia? It all depends on who you ask, right? They'll talk about my energy. They'll talk about my personality. They'll talk about this, that, or the other. But what they won't say, and it all depends on who you're asking, is that I've passed 15 pieces of legislation.
Yeah.
I've done more on the city council than people who have three degrees.
Right.
Right?
And you wish people would focus more on accomplishments instead of what you look like, how you sound, all those things?
Exactly.
Yeah. Because if you were someone else, that's what they would do.
Right. But, but because I am who I am and how I am.
Right.
And because I am pushing the system to accept me as I am, that they would rather focus on the things that make them feel uncomfortable about my presence.
Right.
Instead of my productivity.
Right. And it's interesting too, as far as like the, the criticism, right? I've experienced this. I don't know if it has been for you, but like, I was surprised that it was more so the people that looked just like me, that would be the harshest. And that hurt for me because I thought like, oh, I thought you would be accepting of this. But what I found is that a lot of us are still stuck in that survival mentality. And looking to hide, assimilate, do all these things as it was before, because that's what we've been taught.
Yep.
Right?
Yeah. And you know, it's so funny because growing up, so I used, my hair was big and curly. Always, my whole entire life, I've had unparo.
Yeah.
And my own people, bete peinado, te pasan long, you know, like always has been my hair. And this past March, oh my God, almost a year ago now, I went to the, to the, to the Dominican Republic. Y ahí me pasaron el blow. And the lady said, ah, te voy a poner un tratamiento para que te dure más. And I said, pero no, it's not gonna tumbarme mis risos. Like, it's not gonna get rid of my curls. And it did. And that was them trying to tame me so that I could look more presentable and more professional. And now I've had to cut my hair little by little so my, my natural hair can come back.
Wow.
So that's what, it's our own people
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
that try to tame us, to try to change us, try to colonize us, like. And that's deeply rooted. That's self-hate.
Yeah.
And a lot of Dominicans even, they don't like the fact that I'm, I say, I'm a, I'm an Afro-Latina, that I'm a, you know, like.
People, people have told you that?
Yeah, they were like, but why can't you just say you're Latina? Why you have to say you're Afro-Latina?
Why can't you just say you're Dominican? Yeah.
Right. I'm like, because I want to make sure that people recognize that I know where I come from. That's my identity. Like, I want people to respect that.
Yeah.
Right? As part of my identity.
And also maybe it'll help someone else realize that for themselves.
Yeah, and they're like, well, what if people don't know what it is? I said, they can Google it.
They can Google.
That's it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I don't even understand what the big deal is. I was told when I first ran to not say that I was a single mother. To, on none of my literature, they said, don't add being a single mom. They said, don't put being an immigrant and don't say you're Afro-Latina. I said, well, you're just taking away everything who I am? I said, I'm gonna say all of, they said, don't say you're, don't say you're a single mom because people might judge you because you're running for office and you don't have, you know, you don't have a husband. Don't say you're immigrant because of the political climate right now is not that, you know, friendly towards immigrants, right? Don't say I Afro-Latina because people don't know what that is. And then I said, well, I'm gonna say all of those things because I'm not here to be anything but who I am.
Was there, was there a moment when you considered it though?
No, ever.
Wow. But have you always been like that? Like, for, for most, for most of us, for example, the guests on the show, they go through a certain phase where maybe they finally get that corporate job and they're just like.
I've always been that way.
Always.
You know what? The only time that I had a moment of like, reservation was when I got hired to cover the presidential elections for MTV. There were, we were six first-time reporters on air. We were called the Choose or Lose Street Team. And there was, everyone was from like big-name schools, Berkeley, Columbia, George Washington, all these like American universities, whatever, all these big names. And all well-established college recent graduates. And I was older, number one. I went to Mount Ida, some, a school that I've never, I mean, you, well.
I have a cousin that went there.
Well, when I worked at MTV, nobody had heard about Mount Ida. And I was so incredibly intimidated. And I don't even know, I think I got there because of my hair and because I had worked with young people and I had swag. And that's it. But I didn't even audition for it.
But that's, that's you downplaying your accomplishments though.
Let me tell you, I went there to pitch other kids because they were looking for an 18-year-old. Like, they were looking for a Latino or a Latina. And I had worked with a little girl who had lost her mom to HIV and AIDS, and I submitted a documentary about her life for another MTV contest. So they thought that she was over 18. And I said, no, but I can find you some people who are. So I went to MTV to pitch other Latinos, other Latinas. And they were like, well, why not you? I said, well, because I'm not in college or, you know, I'm, I've already been out of there for 10 years. They said, but you had worked with young people. So they put me on. On, I auditioned, well, auditioned, they asked me some questions on camera. Anyways, long story short, I got hired as a first-time reporter covering the presidential elections for MTV. Completely intimidated.
Those were high stakes, presidential election.
I know. And I wanted to be anything but who I was again. So when I came to this country, I wanted to be anything but Latina. And that was my second moment in life, where I wanted to be anything but who I was.
So what did you do?
I froze. For the first six months, I tried to be like the rest of the reporters. Doing the stand-up like this, you know, like, hey, this is.
Like you changed how you spoke?
No, I tried to be, I tried to be what I thought they wanted me to be.
I did the same.
And.
When I was working at like tech companies and Facebook and TikTok, I did the same thing?
Right. And then I, I decided, I had gone, that we were in, we were on tour, we were in New Orleans, we were, we were traveling around the country. And then I said, fuck it. It's, I'm six months in, I wasn't getting any airplay because, you know, most of them, they were getting a lot more airplay than me. I wasn't getting any because they were like, who the hell are you now?
You just blend in with the rest of them.
Yeah. And the thing was, is that they, when I was just interviewing, I was being who I was. And then when I had got the job, I thought I had to be something else. So, you know? And then I remember, I said, yeah, I'm gonna just start being who I am. And when I started being who I was, I got more airplay. I said, yeah, I'm gonna just start being who I am. And when I started being who I was, I got more airplay than all of them. All of them.
Was that validating?
That was validated. I was like, oh shit, they like me.
Yeah.
But I remember then, there was another moment with, when I was at MTV, and I had to pitch something to the executive producer, and I was so nervous. He said, Julia, just be yourself. I said, oh, okay, be myself. And I was like.
And ever since then?
I stayed there for ten years.
Yeah.
But I had to fight them every single step of the way, because I had to fight for all the stories that I wanted to tell. Cause I went from being in front of the camera, cause I didn't wanna, cause I didn't like the way they wrote my scripts. So I said, I wanted to write my own.
What sort of stories did you wanna tell that you, that it was difficult to get ahead?
Like all things that deal with urban youth, urban issues, you know, like, um, everything. Um, but after, after I learned how to pitch stories the way they did, I got most of my stories told. And then I started working in development for MTV, and most of the work reflected my values.
Yeah.
Um, I worked on creating MTV tres, the, the network, I worked on the, um, creating that channel.
That's amazing. So you're really into just like storytelling on lo- on a local level?
And Nash, yeah, and I, um.
Um, nationally as well, sorry?
My, um, you know, that show, My Super Sweet Sixteen?
Yeah.
So I worked on the development of that. But when I pitched it, it was Me Quinces, and it was supposed to be on MTV tres, and it was supposed to be about the rite of passage. But they took it and turned it into something else.
How do you, how do you think, cause one thing is getting the confidence to be yourself, right? But then another part is, how, how were you received? Like, do you think there was pushback, similar to when you ran?
Well, that was a very different time, because I think I was only, I was the first, I was the first Afro Latina, I was the first Latina. News reporter for MTV on the news and doc side. They had never seen anyone like me. And someone that was just so raw. Um, so they didn't have no other choice but to take me all in, right? And then I became the, the, the segment producer. They would send me everywhere. Like, I remember one time, I, I would always find stories to tell. And I came across a story about this black kid who knowingly, um, infected someone with HIV and AIDS. And because that was this field that I did a lot of work in, I knew exactly how it worked, because a little girl that I had, um, helped support after she lost her mom. So I knew a lot about the, the industry, not the industry, the disease.
Yeah.
Um, and I went to South Dakota, here on South Dakota. This small white town that was up in arms, because this little black boy went there and knowingly.
Quote unquote.
Allegedly infected one person. And then the whole school campus was up in arms, because everybody was sleeping with everybody.
Right.
So anyways, I went there to find people to, to talk about that situation. And they sent me to here on South Dakota for like a weekend, just as, so it was gonna be a three minute news story about. This situation. And I ended up staying there for six weeks.
Wow.
They left me there, because they went to, it became a full half hour show. And I got the entire town to talk.
Wow.
And then they sent me to Chicago, so I could find all of his people, and I found them. But here on South Dakota, all those, all of those white people. They got to know me, and when I left, they threw me a going away party. They went from not wanting to talk to me, to telling me the whole story, then to missing me when I was gonna leave. Like, so people do embrace me as I am, and that's also reaffirming. That people may not recognize their biases, they may not. But if you keep showing up as you are. They'll start to embrace those things about you.
Yeah.
Um, and look beyond that. And I think that's the beauty of like pushing through things when they make you feel uncomfortable.
Yeah. No, that's, that's beautiful. And I didn't really know about all the work that you did at MTV, that's really dope.
Yeah, ten years.
I'm curious to like, how, like, what made you go from like corporate, producing. Content, all of those kind of things, to then wanna start organizing, community building, and then eventually get into like politics?
Yep. So I'll give you the abbreviated version, right? Um, so I went to school for communications.
Okay.
Right? Because, uh, I told you I had dropped out, I went back, and there was a, uh. The first ever news anchor in the state of Massachusetts went to share her story at my high school.
Okay.
About what life was like for her. She was the first African American woman in this position. And I was in awe by her. I was like, wow. I wanna be just like her.
What was it about her?
That she was black, and she, it was the first time that I saw somebody that I, I didn't even, I've seen her in the news, but I, I got to hear her story. I was so inspired by her.
Like it felt attainable for the first time?
Yeah, but I wasn't even thinking about college. I was cleaning offices and selling shoes. At a shoe store, I was making more money than my mom could ever even imagine making, right? So I was good. But she and, she was the first one who inspired me to think about college. So I went to.
That's why representation is so important.
I went to college because of her.
Wow.
And my freshman year in college, I did a, uh, you know, you get to do class projects. I did my class project on her. And I interviewed her, and I got an A minus. I still got the paper. And when I got my job at, and then after I graduated, when I was in college. My neighborhood was always on the news, because there was a lot of violence.
Interesting.
And what I decided while I was, you know, still in college and doing my internship, is that I said, I don't wanna, I don't wanna report on the news. That's happening in my neighborhood, I wanna do something about it. So I pivoted, and I started working with young people. And teaching them how to utilize video and other tools on how to tell their stories, and how to deal with their anger, to try to do violence prevention work. So I did that for like five or six years, but I always wanted to be a reporter, so I moved to New York.
Interesting.
I worked on, I was, I volunteered on my friend's mom's campaign, she was running for mayor. And then I decided to stay in New York, and I worked at another nonprofit, that's where I met the little girl who lost her mom to HIV and AIDS. And then I did a documentary for her, because I still wanted to do something in television. Got a job at MTV, and then every time I would come home to visit my, my mom. I'd see that, um, I started to see like ten years, you know, after a while. I started visually noticing that violence was on the rise again, because every time I would come and visit. Here, they do like, um, memorials, like, the, like, um, belas, carros.
Yeah.
Um, and that was my visual indicator that violence was on the rise again in my neighborhood.
Yeah, I see them all the time in New York, yeah. Even in my building, my mom's building, yeah.
So, that was my visual indicator that violence was on the rise. I had already been in corporate for ten years.
Yeah.
Um, I was looking to do something more than just what I had been doing at MTV. And I decided to pivot, and I moved back home.
That's a big decision.
Yeah, I moved back home.
Cause also, I mean, even for me, like, there's so much, um, identity that we attach to like certain corporate names.
Yeah, MTV.
Yeah, that's a big name. And not only for you, but you, you know, there's pride even like, like I remember my abuela finally, when I had a, a, a name. She used to go to church and be like, oh, mi, mi nieto trabajan aquí, right? And then, yeah, like, was that difficult to let go?
It was. Not really for, it was and it wasn't, because I left New York and I left MTV, but MTV did not wanna leave me. Um, cause they still kept giving me projects, even when I lived here. And I'm like, I'm done, you know? Um, so I opened up my own little multimedia shop. Basically, working with nonprofits and teaching them how to utilize storytelling to uplift their, their work.
I love that.
That was my real focus. Um, and also working with young people to teach them this industry.
Yeah.
So that they can break into it, because I needed more black and brown people behind the camera.
Yeah, to tell. And reshape the narrative that is being told. Not that there, you know, not that there wasn't violence, but there's so many different angles.
Know where it comes from, like, what's the psyche?
What's the re, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I.
So how did you pivot from that to, was, did somebody tell you straight up, was like, yo, you should run for?
No, no, no. So I did that with young people, and then I realized that I would do all this work with young people, and then I would send them back to really fucked up situations. Cause they'll go back to homes that were not ready to receive them. So then I started working with parents. And working with parents, I realized a lot of these parents had interrupted education. And I ended up working in education organizing. I started my own nonprofit, which was amazing that I did that. I started my own nonprofit, and that nonprofit grew. And through that work, I met a lot of lo- local elected officials.
Got you.
And one in particular was Congresswoman Ayana Pressley. She's part of the squad.
The squad?
In, in DC with AOC.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
And I was a super duper volunteer, like I loved her, cause she was the only one that would come to all of my little events that I had with my parents. And I, I really appreciated how she always showed up for our community.
I know exactly what you're talking about now, yeah.
Um, and when, uh, on election day, the, the news was following her around, and I was there trying to get people to vote. Um, and they said, hey, could we interview you, win or lose, after, you know, tomorrow? You know, after our election day? And I said, sure. I gave her my number, they called me, she won. And then I said, well, she could be the first black woman to represent us in Massachusetts in Congress, then I could be the first Latina to represent us on the city council. And I didn't know what I was, yeah, I just said that.
Was that the first time you said it out loud?
I was like, that was the first time I said it out loud.
But like, you had the idea.
No, I, I said, I said, if she could do it, that I could do it. To just be on the Boston City Council, be the first Latina on the Boston City Council.
Yeah.
She could be the first black woman to represent us in Congress in Massachusetts, I could be the first Latina.
That's kinda like that high school moment, of like, if she did that, I could do that.
Oh, I didn't even think about that, but yes.
Yeah.
You got, all my stories are intertwined here today. Yes, I never thought about it like that. But that was my, I posted that on Facebook. Left the article, and then I highlighted my little quote. And everybody was like, liking the, you know. So I had two hundred likes. And I, I'm gonna need your help to get back into my, cause I got kicked out of, um, Facebook, so.
I'll, I'll try to, I don't work anymore, but.
Clicked the link and I ended up getting deactivated, but all of my daughter's photos are there, so I need it.
Oh, okay, okay.
Um, but anyways, I got two hundred likes on Facebook. Yeah, and then I was like, oh shit, people think I'm really gonna do this? And then people were underneath that thread, they're like, oh, I'll do your website, like people started. And then like three weeks later, I was running for office.
Three weeks later?
I had my whole campaign, I had like a website, I started running, and that's why I only went by one vote, because I was not prepared for this.
What did people close to you?
They thought I was crazy.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Está loca?
Y todavía dicen que yo soy loca.
Todavía.
That people still think I'm crazy.
But like, despite that.
But in a good way.
There's, oh, like, um, I, I say like I'm delusional, but like you gotta have a little bit of delusional confidence, to be able to do a lot of the things that we do.
It wasn't even confidence. It was an experiment. Like, I wanted to see what was, I wanted to show what was possible.
But you didn't think that?
I didn't think I was gonna win. I swear, I didn't, I was like, there was no way I'm gonna win.
So, but like.
That was crazy.
But that's fascinating. Like, all right, what I'm trying to say is like, this is what I want. I want your energy for everybody. Like, because you, even though you didn't think you were gonna win, like you were comfortable with the idea of like, oh, well, whatever, I tried it.
Because it wasn't about win or lose for me. What I always said is, look, I would rather lose, right? And uplift my people than to win and neglect us.
So good.
You know? And this time when I ran, I chose not to seek any political endorsement. I didn't want any politician to endorse me.
Why not?
Because I didn't wanna undermine the will of the voters. And everybody attached themselves to all of these politicians, but I'm unbossed and unbought. I'm, I'm my own voice. So nobody can claim doing shit for me, but the people. That's the only, those are the only folks that I answer to. Is the people and God, and that's it. That gives me freedom.
Yeah.
And because I can run that way, I can talk however I want. And you should see me in the chamber, that's when I really bring the fire. Because they ain't ready for it.
But isn't that going back to maybe those early days at MTV, where you comparing yourself, you're in the chamber, you're seeing all these people? Maybe comparing yourself, like, why? These days, what gives you that? Like, you still don't get intimidated these days?
I think your, as you get older, your level of intimidation evolves. And what you do is you grow bolder and braver to walk into spaces that are not ready to receive you. Because you have new armor. You know how to, um, shield yourself from hate. Um, and you know how to use the master's tools. And that is a beautiful thing, when you could still be ghetto fabulous, and still walk into a chamber and shut it down.
I love that. To, to wrap up, what's the one thing that continues to inspire you to be your most authentic self? As much as you don't like that word, um, in these spaces?
It's two things. One. One is my mother. Because still to this day, she's too embarrassed to speak English. She doesn't know how. She struggles with reading and writing. But my mother, despite her limitations. When people first came to this country, it was my mom that helped facilitate for them everything that they needed to be set up for success. Um, and she never allowed her limitations to prevent her from. Being where she is today, right? And even though she has been working at the same college. Being a food handler, a low wage worker, twenty-five years in twins, only making twenty-two dollars an hour. My mom still has, um, a lot of, of pride in her work ethic, right?
Yeah.
So that motivates me. Um, and then the other is my daughter. I want my daughter to know that she is enough. And that she doesn't have to change for anyone. And that everywhere she goes. She doesn't have to morph this into something more acceptable. And she did once, and I didn't like it. She, um, she got into an exam school. Those are like those, I don't know what you guys call them around your way, but.
Like private schools?
No, these are the schools that you have to take a test to get into.
Sure, okay.
They're public schools, but they're like.
Oh, got it. Yeah, 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 I know what you're talking about, yeah.
Caliber.
Yeah.
And they, the, the year that she got in was the year that they got rid of the test, because they thought the test was racially.
Sure.
Um, biased. And my daughter, this was last year. She said that she wanted to get the honor roll every semester, because she didn't wanna be a SIP code kid, because that's what they were calling those kids. Kids who got there just because of their SIP code. And that hurt me, that my daughter felt like she needed to prove that she belonged, and she got the honor roll every semester. To prove that she belongs. I would have taken that a different way, like, damn, I can't believe they, you know, she did that, she had to do that. But that made me feel really proud. Because it goes to show that she's willing to do whatever it takes to let people know that she belongs there too.
Yeah.
And I think that's a beautiful thing, even though it hurt me that she had to feel that way, but it also felt empowering. Because she wants, you know, she's claiming her space, whether people want her there or not, she's there.
And she's using it as motivation.
Exactly.
And I love that you mentioned your daughter, because I had this one guest on the show, um, Anna Chepi, she said. Her son could tell who she was gonna meet with every day, depending on how she got dressed and how she spoke on the phone. Right? So eventually, so the son was like, oh, mom, today you're meeting with the finance folks? Oh, okay. Mom, today you're meeting with the creative folks? Okay. And eventually the kid is like, mom, should I change who I am before I go to school? So it's important like for us to show up as ourselves, because people are watching us.
Our kids.
Our kids are watching us, our nieces are mentees, our friends. And if we're, and sometimes we're showing them that in order for them to be successful, they need to fake it. Without telling them, we're just showing them.
Yep, yep.
So I'm, I'm happy that I get the honor and the privilege to share you with other people and show them that you can be yourself and be successful. So I appreciate you.
And we could be more than that.
Yeah.
Like, la tripa mía, like, you're gonna, you're gonna edit all my tripas out, right? Um, yeah, like, you could be who you are, because who you are is, is beautiful. And you're, you're a gift from God. Like, God made us all unique. And that is our responsibility, is to show up as, in the gift that we have been made in. And that is the beauty of life, right? And it makes it so much easier when we can just be.
Yeah, cause the opposite is exhausting.
It is.
Yeah. Mi hen de, that wraps up another episode of the Gantuitis Podcast. If you enjoyed what you heard, please do us a favor. Like, share, comment, wherever you're listening to this episode, be sure to follow, subscribe, and leave us a rating and review. If you're listening on Apple Podcasts or Spotify. Thank you and see you next time.